I'm going to call to order the Board of Commissioners' work session for March 4th, 2013. Chair Liz Poole is at a DECA meeting up in Greensboro. Up in Greensboro, so she's been up there this whole weekend for that event. So, y'all have to suffer with me today. We have the agenda that's before us. Is there any corrections or amendments to the agenda as presented? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Motion carries. First matter we have up is Lynn Whitkey and Will Crabtree. If y'all two will come up. I would assume that Mr. Crabtree wants to go first. He has the shortest amount of business. Probably can say it before he sits down.
We only have one question.
Approximately two to three more weeks left on it, so hopefully, next time I visit, I can say it's finished. It's the roof at Kannapolis Intermediate School, so we're in the last leg of that.
How much more? You said it's just a couple of weeks, or?
Two to three weeks. The contract date is mid-March, so probably not even two to three weeks, one to two weeks.
Any questions for Mr. Crabtree? Thank you very much, Mr. Crabtree.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitkey.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I fortunately have more than one, but, and we were working with staff, we were able to get a reduced milestone. What we've done in terms of modifying this, and I believe you asked for it originally, was to reduce and pull out all the completed projects. So, we've just, they're there, but just hidden, and what you're looking at are the active projects, for all intents and purposes. So, the remaining projects are well underway, starting with Central Cabarrus High, the windows and doors, we're nearing completion. The only remaining portion of work there is the gymnasium windows. And of course, while the kids are still using the gym, we're kind of got our hands tied. We hope to get some of that work done over the Easter break, the spring break, and then if we go beyond that point, we would have to most likely wait until the end of the current semester to finish that work, but it will be done by certainly early summer. The rest of the architectural projects, the chillers and cooling towers and controls at Concord High School and Northwest, both of those are done. We are just in the process of getting final payment, final payment applications from the contractors. We should have those tomorrow, and we'll get those signed off, and the jobs will be complete. The gymnasium at Northwest High School is underway. We're removing the existing gym floor at this point, and removing things that we can use from the gym, electrical fixtures, exit signs, that sort of thing. We'll turn the whole facility over, except for the classrooms. The classrooms will, a portion of them will remain in use. The rest of the building will become the contractor's this Friday evening. And so, next Monday, I assume, they'll start full work on the remodeling of the interior of the building. And the addition is going well, also. Central Cabarrus, the electrical vault, that work is also done. We're waiting for final documents from the contractor, as well as final pay apps. And the breaker panel work continues. We're about halfway through, we hope, to complete that work by early March. And that probably, partially, has been delayed due to some field staff issues, but I believe we will certainly complete it no later than the 1st of April, at this point. The partial roof replacement, that we're planning to bid shortly. We're, because of the nature of that work, we'll probably do all of that work in the summertime after school is over for the semester. And the other projects that you see, reinstated projects, that fourth group down on the list, the kitchen hood replacement, a culture and web is in design. The Mount Pleasant High School boilers, we're working out a final amendment to the contract with the design team, and they'll begin work shortly on that. The Concord High School weight room and vocational building remodeling is in design also. And the practice fields, I've got a call in, we've submitted all the documents to the National Guard, we're simply waiting for them to respond to us, in terms of whether or not they're going to partner with us and do some work. And we hope that's a positive. And we also hope that, you know, that we can get that done this summer. That's kind of imperative, obviously, because we only have funding through April of next year. So, we'll continue to keep our fingers crossed on that. And as I say, I have a call in to the captain of the guard unit that's doing that, or reviewing, I should say, our application, so we hope to hear something soon. And the other projects are in, still in a postponed status. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Whitkey? Mr. Whitkey, on the first two pages, the QSCAB-funded project status, which is like a brown header.
Yes, sir.
As of February the 19th, 2013. It looked as though there is $1.3 million that's not being used from the QSCABs. Am I reading that report correctly? I'm looking at the second page, the bottom number, subtotal 1.991, and then 1.321.
Well, that represents funds that have been moved from one project to the next. And, you know, that's all that that total identifies.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I may say one thing. Mr. Whitkey, if you do get the Corps of Engineers to want to participate, if we can run that contract by Steve Cordell.
Oh, yes.
Make sure that we comply with everything that he researched for us.
That's a very good point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next we have is the Cabarrus Adult Care Nursing Home Care Community Advisory Committee's annual report, Mrs. Abinator.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you all for allowing me to be here again today. Usually, we have one of our volunteers present this report to you, and our volunteer fell sick, so I'm your substitute today. But I'm glad to be back here to be able just to give you an update about what the nursing home community advisory committee and the adult care home community advisory committee have done over the past year. You have the report there in front of you, if you have any questions about it. I'm not going to cover all of it, but I will hit some of the highlights. One of the things that we have found to be a benefit of presenting this information to you all is that usually, we have one or two volunteers who applies to serve after this meeting almost every single year. And certainly, we're always in the, always on the lookout for good volunteers. Probably three years ago, when I sat before you, we were in a pretty desperate state, four volunteers. I'm happy to share that for the third year now in a row, we're pretty stable for both committees. Both committees have, you'll see in the report there, for the past couple of years, and this past year as well, have been able to complete 100% of their facility visits that are required, they're state mandated. A lot of what these committees do have, they have very specific mandates that these volunteers have to be trained on, and they go through a 15-hour training process with our agency, with the Central Carolina Ombudsman Program. And then, they have 10 years of annual training per year, as well as all of their facility visits. And they visit each of the long-term care facilities in Cabarrus County at least four times a year. So, they have quite a load of work for them. For a volunteer position, it is quite a lot of work, and they do a great job getting that done. Their reports are public record, and we're able to share those with the public, and help folks kind of determine where they want to place their loved one when it comes time, sometimes using the information from those reports when folks contact my office to get those. The purpose of the community advisory committee, just to remind anyone who does not know, is to visit folks who live in long-term care facilities, to garner interest from the community, to try and get the community involved in the facilities, and the facilities involved with the community, and to also monitor for quality care. The way that we monitor for quality care is to go into the facilities and interview and talk with the residents. And the residents are very often looking forward to visits, and if there are systemic issues, and it may not be a true quality issue, but more of just a quality of life issue for the residents, in those cases, we're able to advocate to the administration of the facility to try to improve quality of life for the individuals in the facility. So, that's just a little picture of what we do. And of course, always on the lookout for more volunteers. The volunteers, this past year, planned the 12th Annual Resident Rights Luncheon, to which I believe you all are always invited, and that will stand again this coming year. We always do that in October, and you're more than welcome to come and join us. We usually have a hot dog luncheon, and the residents love that. All the residents from all of the facilities in the whole county are invited to come, and so we usually have 180 to 200 people come to this event, and it's a terrific event. And the best part about it is that we operate this on a zero budget, and we're able to get so much community involvement in this program, in this event, that we're able to have 200 folks at a great hot dog luncheon with entertainment and a great couple of hours of fun, and the volunteers are instrumental in making that happen. Just quickly, some problems that the committee has faced this past year. We have had more turnover among our administrators in our nursing homes in Cabarrus County. I can't really attribute that to anything, but we have had a substantial more turnover this past year in our nursing homes. And in our adult care homes, it's important, I think, for everyone to know, our adult care homes right now are really struggling with several different issues going on. It's almost like a perfect storm, if you will. There are three main changes going on that are affecting our adult care homes right now. One is changes in the mental health field and the designation where adult care homes are not to have a high percentage of folks who have a mental illness diagnosis. The other is changes with personal care service regulation. And then, the third is changes with identifying folks who might have mental illness. And so, I don't want to bore you all with all of the details behind that. If there are questions that you have, I'd be happy to share more information with you about that. But it is important, I think, for all of us to know that our adult care homes have gone through some substantial changes. In most cases, the push behind all of these changes is to save money through Medicaid, which I don't think anyone doubts that's a good plan, but getting there is a struggle for our facilities. And that's one thing that we've certainly seen this year. Strengths of our facilities in Cabarrus County, we do hear that our residents have a good, positive experience in many of the homes in Cabarrus County, and that's a great benefit, that folks have those choices available to them. And lastly, just some final comments. The community, the committee, of course, will plan again our annual hot dog luncheon, so if there are folks who are interested in that. I know in the past, we were able to work with the, hopefully I get the name right, the Caring, Cabarrus Caring Hearts.
Helping Hearts, C-3.
Helping Hearts, C-3. Okay. Thank you. And if we are able to work with them, I know last year, our involvement with them, two years ago, filled the goodie bags, and all of those goodies went to residents who live on a very, very small amount of money per month. The last thing I'll say is that you all and the community at large are invited to the World Elder Abuse Awareness Event this year. It's going to take place on June the 12th at Carolina's Medical Center. I do have some Save the Date cards, if you'd like me to share those with Megan. I'd be happy to do that, to be sure that everyone has that. And just lastly, I just appreciate very much the working relationship that we have with Megan. Her office, you all allow us to prescreen folks before they're appointed. Not all of our counties do that, and that is a tremendous help, to be able to prescreen, to make sure volunteers know what they're getting into before they do, and to help them determine if that is the volunteer program that they want to be involved in. So, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Abinator?
I would just ask, I know you mentioned that you've had great participation in, you know, from volunteers just recently, but I know we've had an issue with getting volunteers, but I was going to ask, how many positions are available, or spots on the board? Do you know off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head. I know that, I believe the adult care home is a 17-member board, and I have about nine currently. The nursing home is a smaller, smaller board, and right now, one of the things, we had two folks who recently inquired, and I've asked Megan to certainly share whenever we know which committee has the need, the greatest need at that time, and so that's one of the things we try to do. The adult care home, because they have more homes, and the homes are more spread out, and they have two different committees, that they have a nights and weekend committee, so that folks who are working are able to serve on the committee, as well as a committee that meets during the daytime. So, we steer more people in that direction for the adult care home. It needs to be a larger committee.
Okay. Great. The World Elder Abuse, that's going to be on June the 12th.
Yes.
This year.
Yes.
At Northeast.
That's right.
If you can give a card, or get a card to Megan, that way she can scan it, or someone can scan it and email it out to all of us, so we can have the Save the Date for ourselves.
I have those. I'll leave them with Megan. I thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. You have a great day. Next we have is, discuss modified work session format with Mr. Downs.
Yeah, in speaking with, excuse me, Chairman Poole, she's had comments, I've had some comments as far as the way we currently do business as a board, where we do sort of the agenda, pre-agenda meeting, like you're doing today. You discuss the items, and they move on to the regular agenda. However, a lot of the discussion takes place at this meeting. By the time we get to the regular meeting, it's sort of, a lot of it goes on consent, and there's not a whole lot of discussion. So, what was proposed to do was to change the format of the work session. It would be more of a casual discussion on topics that you, that may or may not be on the agenda. It'll just be some things that are going on that you haven't had a chance to discuss in length. That it would be, you may spend 15 minutes on, you may spend 30 or an hour, hour and a half on just that one topic, therefore, you wouldn't have to worry about keeping that agenda moving on. And then, the regular meeting would become the meeting. All business would take place, all voting would take place at that meeting. So, your initial discussion would be at that meeting and the voting. There would be still a consent, but it would be consent items that we know are just pretty much, they need to go through the process for a signature, not necessarily, you've already discussed them and go to that meeting. So, what we're asking you, is that something you think is a good idea to change that? I think Ms. Poole had gotten some questions, I think maybe even you, Commissioner White, that you had, somebody had asked you about some things, some of the public input, since you don't take public input at this meeting, and you're discussing it at this meeting, by the time it gets to the other, to the regular meeting, it's on consent item, and there's no opportunity to say anything. So, that's, we came up with that proposal to discuss it with you guys tonight, to see if that's what you want to do, or if you're liking the format that you're using right now, then we will continue on in this direction. So, I guess I'll leave that up to you guys for some questions or discussion.
Well, I think it's a good idea, because I've had complaints from several people about things that's been put on the consent agenda, and we just vote through it and go on. They had some things they didn't like about it, or they wanted to say about it, and they didn't get a chance to do that, and if we'd do it. If we did that, then they would have that opportunity in the public meeting. I think the public should have an opportunity to speak on anything we're going to vote on, and have their say on it, whether they like it or dislike it, you know, and then we're going to pass it or not pass it, so at least they have the opportunity to have their say in it, where now they don't have that.
I understand what you're saying, you know, we do discuss items in this meeting that we do put on the consent agenda. However, just because it's on the consent agenda, we're not, it's not binding until we vote on the consent agenda. Any item can be pulled off of the, on the consent agenda at the general meeting. Any one of us can pull an item off at any time. The concern I have is, or I guess maybe the question I have, is if we go to that process, will we see the items that are going to be on our agenda, you know, two weeks in advance like we're used to now, or will it be the three or four days when the agenda's published?
No, you would have, and Megan, you can answer this, but you would have advanced notice just like you would prior to this meeting, so you would have plenty of time to read them, get familiar with them, ask the questions you need to ask and that kind of stuff.
So, it wouldn't be the two weeks, you know, because, I mean, the items we see today, you know, we have two weeks before the general meeting.
We can set that date, as long, as early as you want, and we can set that date. So, yeah. No, it would not be, the only reason it's three days now, or whatever that is, is because you've already seen them.
Right.
At this work session and moving forward. So, if you want them a week in advance, two weeks in advance, that just tells us as staff that we have to tell the department heads to get them in at the appropriate time. If it's one week or two weeks, depending on what that is, it's just an earlier cutoff date for them, and some may have to just wait and go to the next month, or whatever it is, so.
Okay.
When was the last time we took anything off the consent agenda at the public meeting?
I think the last meeting.
What was it?
Excuse me, we didn't take it off.
We didn't take it off.
We did discuss it.
That's right. But we didn't take it off. The public had no right to say anything about it, though.
They could, yeah. I mean, because we have informal public comments before the consent agenda, so they can talk about something on the consent agenda. And even if we approved the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, we have informal public comments, and someone says, item number three, what are y'all thinking? Y'all are crazy. We could pull off number three to talk about it some more, to address whatever concerns that citizen may or may not have. We can certainly do it at that point in time. What I see is, what this will do is potentially, we may not have decisions made that night, and it may be tabled for another meeting, so it's another four weeks before a decision is made, because although we get the, we could get the agenda two weeks, three weeks, we don't have the ability to talk amongst ourselves, trying to get an understanding about, what are your thoughts? These are my thoughts, because that needs to be at a public meeting, like we're having here. So, for instance, if we were to switch it over in April, at the April meeting, there may be some questions that changes our minds, or has a different idea, and if you're not ready to make a decision that night, because you want to think about it some more, we're going to wait another four weeks before we make that decision, before we make that vote, potentially. That's the only drawback I see. The good thing about this aspect of what we have here is we get a chance to talk about it, and we may have one opinion or one thought, and as we think about it more, about what are we saying, and what have we said, we can discuss a little bit further on the second Monday's meeting, or the second meeting of the month, and then vote on it, and it may be, speed up the process in regards to having that vote. I do agree with the public, can talk anytime they want to, and if they want to talk about something on the consent agenda, they certainly can, but rarely do they talk about. We usually have three to four people, and rarely do they talk about what's on the meeting that month. It's something that's happening in Concord, it's something, some perception about Department of Social Services, you know, so, and one was about trapping. So, rarely do we have something that the public talks about at that meeting for that item.
Well, I think though, a lot of times, though, the public, when they come into that meeting, they've never seen the consent agenda until they pick this paper up off of the seat in there. So, they don't even know what's on it, basically, the majority of the people. If they didn't come to this meeting, then they don't know what's going to be on that consent agenda.
Well, it's posted. It's posted, this one's posted now, and then we have another one posted in about a week.
I know that, but most people don't go on the Internet or on the computer and look that stuff up. A lot of people don't have a computer. A lot of people can't look at it.
One of my concerns as well is if the items are, if we receive the agenda, as we have traditionally, you know, four days before the meeting, it may appear that things are being voted on even quicker, because there's not a two-week period in between the meetings. You know, the agenda packet is published before our general meeting, four days before, and then we vote that evening. That seems to be a faster process than us having a workshop meeting where we discuss it, we have two weeks to think about it, remove it off the consent agenda if we so choose, the public can speak about it, so I'm afraid it may appear that we're moving even faster if we consolidate it all to the general meeting.
Commissioner Morris, do you have any thoughts one way or the other?
My major thoughts are those of confusion. I'm not sure that we're really changing anything substantially. We're still going to have our work session. Two weeks later, we'll have our regular meeting. We're just maybe reducing the number of things that go on the consent agenda, or did I understand incorrectly?
Well, the scenario that I presented would be, the items that you discuss at the work session, they most likely won't even be on the agenda.
Right.
They're just big-ticket items that you guys need to discuss at some time or another, and they're just sometimes so big, it's not appropriate to discuss them in this session, or in this setting.
Right.
It's merely, they deserve a meeting on their own, because they take, they need an hour or two hours to discuss.
Right. Well, my thoughts are favorable towards the change. I think for us to have the opportunity to have open discussion about those things, and the public is notified and invited to be here is a good thing. You know, I think maybe it would be beneficial to do more of that.
Yeah. We do that now. Occasionally, we'll call a special meeting, or you will call a special meeting. This will just happen, if we do it this way, it'll happen every month.
Right. I'm in favor of the change. We can always give it a try, if it doesn't work out well, or if the public doesn't. If we have comments from those folks, we can certainly change it, change it to another format, until we get it right.
Well, let me ask you this. What if, what if we were to have, still have the first and third meeting? So, the first, like we're having today, but nothing goes to the consent agenda, we still get input, information now, everything goes on to new business, and it gets presented again, you know what I'm saying? And that way, the public can comment if they want to, and it's not, and that, that way, we at least have a little bit of discussion here, or whatever discussion we want to have here, and any further discussion on all the items.
Yeah, and in my opinion, that was, that's good. I mean, I think we can always open up and discuss anything, but I don't think that we should purposely make the regular meetings longer, which, which seems to discourage public involvement sometimes. If we, if we discuss everything twice, then I think that might discourage some folks from coming out that don't want to invest three or four hours in sitting through the entire meeting to get to the one item.
Yeah, what I was, what my intent was, or what I was thinking, is if we look at today's meeting, if we have a presentation to today, and I'm looking on page three, which on the bottom right is page 148, if everybody's got it. On page 148, if we had a presentation today on the tax collection advertisement of 2012 tax liens, I doubt very seriously there's going to be much discussion today. If that goes to new business two weeks from now, that would still be presented to us, there's probably not going to be that much more discussion, and we just vote on it, and it would, it'd still have the opportunity for the public to make a comment if that's the way they wanted to, in the informal public comments, you know what I'm saying? That, all I'm saying is, whatever we hear today, that get replicated, because that's what we're going to be, in essence, be doing. But, gee, let's change, it's fine with me. Let's see what happens.
I think it would take away the public's perception that we're sitting here at work sessions, voting on things that we really don't want, we put them on a consent agenda because we don't want them brought up in the public meeting. I think that's a lot of what's going on, from people I've talked to.
So, you're saying, for example, that rather than having some discussion today about North Carolina Department of Transportation request to purchase right-of-way, that we ought to discuss that twice, once here, and then not put it on the consent agenda?
No, no, I don't think something like a right-of-way, that's not going to, unless it's got to do with somebody's property.
Well, I mean, I think it's going to have to be all or nothing. I mean, either everything, because you never know who the public was going to want to talk about it.
How long is it going to take to say, okay, we're going to bring this up, and vote, if we're going to vote on it, it won't take that long to vote on it. You're talking about the, what, you've got seven items on the consent agenda, right? How long would it take to go through them? 10 minutes?
Well.
Basically, I mean.
I will say, I mean, being on this board for over two years now, every big decision we have made, any, any sort of controversial decision we've made has never been put on the consent agenda. It wouldn't be, because, you know, we all didn't agree on it. Every, you know, every decision that has, has been some sort of debate has always been on the regular agenda, and, you know, one thing to keep in mind, too, is, you know, we, in our work sessions, we've started at four, not gotten out till eight or 8:30. If we add that on addition to our general meeting, we could be there till 11 or 12 in the evening, which is fine, however, that's... However, that's, you know, that is a long meeting, but, um, and, you know, certainly I don't discourage the public input at all. That's what, you know, we, you know, we have the discussions here at this work session meeting. We have two weeks to discuss it with the public and I spend a lot of the two weeks in between the meetings, you know, talking with people about it and, you know, making my decision. So I'm a little afraid if we do, um, change it, I won't have as much time to weigh the options and how I would vote.
What, what's the, what is the schedule, television schedule on these meetings? These are televised?
These, work sessions are taped?
Uh-huh.
And then they'll be shown, I believe, Tuesday and Thursday.
So this is not live?
This is not live. The regular meetings are live.
Uh-huh. So between the time of our work session and our regular session, that work session would have been televised four times?
No, the agenda work sessions beginning, begin airing after the first Monday of the month and are broadcast for two weeks up until the regular meeting. So...
So probably more than four times, six or eight times. So the public has an opportunity to see, hear all the discussion that we would have here and then be present at the regular meeting if there was something that they were interested or concerned about.
True.
That's only if you have cable, right?
Yeah.
Cable or a computer where you can watch, watch it on YouTube.
Yeah. And then YouTube, it's available 24/7.
What is the pleasure of this board?
I'm in favor of giving it a try and see how it works out.
I am too.
I would prefer to keep it the same.
I would prefer to keep it the same, but I think that Commissioner, that Chair Poole needs to be, needs to be brought in so that, why don't we ta, uh, why don't we table this until the April meeting so that she can weigh in on it? Or actually, let's put it on the regular meeting.
Regular meeting, new business?
Any problems with putting it on new business? So we'll, we'll talk about that later in the, later in the meeting, but that would be something good to do.
All right.
The essential versus non-essential update?
Yeah. As you remember at your retreat, uh, the, the green dots or red dots, I can't remember which color they were, but we, we gave you those, uh, those Excel spreadsheets up on the wall and gave you the opportunity to stick your dots or, or show your interest or your support for various programs. Uh, we've, we've tallied those, um, reports. We've gone back in now and put in a brief description beside each one. And, uh, so we're going to pass them back out to you. You've got them at your locations there. That, uh, this particular one would be one of those items that, that we would call a, a parking lot item because it's going to take, it'll take a while to discuss. So what we'll do now, based on your decision at your regular session, based on the, um, meeting schedule, um, we will pass these out tonight. If you vote to change the, uh, the, um, schedule of meetings or the type of meetings, then we will put this on as your work session in April. If not, then we will probably ask you to, uh, call a special meeting just to talk about this because this, this deserves quite a bit of discussion. And, and we would probably do that sooner than later because a lot of your responses and, and ultimate decisions on that, uh, would, would have an impact, uh, one way or the other on how we prepare the budget.
So each, each one of these Xs represents a dot?
Yes, sir.
That was on the chart?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Downs would like to point out that I will go out and, this was only the county department section. There was another human services. I'll go print that one and bring copies in for everybody.
Okay. Yeah. So you can see there, there are some in there that may not have two, three, four, five dots on there. So we want to give you one more option simply because there was, there was a very, very brief, if any, description on any of those. So this will go ahead and give you a, a better idea of what those programs are and, and then maybe even spur some questions that you have for staff on what those programs are. And it may impact whether you want to add a dot if you didn't prior to this or, or, or whatever. But ultimately, we would take this information as we talk with our department heads and if there's some programs there that you don't think, uh, that we need to continue or, or that you think, uh, we need to look at a little more closely, uh, then we will do so accordingly. So, so this, this will not show up on your regular meeting agenda. This was just a report to you guys to just distribute the information and then based on how you decide on the formatting of the meetings, uh, then we will make a decision as to when we discuss it next. But, uh, and we'll get back with you on that.
Next is, uh, or is any discussion that y'all want to talk about in regards to that report? Next is the meeting in a box.
Okay. This is an annual event that's passed out by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. It's their effort to, uh, to allow you to advocate for your goals and objectives that you have identified and sent on to the association and then also the association sent on to our legislators. So it's sort of a, it's a structured meeting where we would invite our, our local legislators here, uh, let them give us an update on what's going on in Raleigh thus far with their budget process and then also give you an opportunity as board members to, uh, to, uh, advocate for, for a, a particular program or their support on something that we're working on here at a local level. So, um, Megan has, has solicited some available dates to them. We're, we're still getting those back. So as soon as we get two or three dates, then we'll, we'll shoot them out to you for your availability and, and we'll do that here in this, this, this room here. So, uh, as soon as we get that information back from them. But it, it's, some of it's structured. The association would like us to, to ask them certain questions just to get their feedback so that they would know as a, with some aggregate information from all the counties. But then it's also gives you an avail, uh, gives you the opportunity to ask and be more specific with local questions as well.
Last year, we, when we had that meeting, we raised, we gave like six goals, asking them to, um, champion for us. Can you give us a, give us an out, update as to what those, if those, if any of those goals were presented in legislation or any sort of discussion?
I don't have the goals in front of me, but I can, yes, we can get you that, sure.
Because when I checked it, I could not find one goal that any one of our legislators did anything to assist in regards to the goals that we presented to them and, and they said they were all in favor of.
Okay. We will, we will get that information to you.
Great. Anything else?
No, sir.
Uh, next is 4.1, discussion of the Beaufort County. I hope it's Beaufort. Is it Beaufort or Buford?
I think it's Beaufort.
Beaufort. Buford, South Carolina, right?
That's right.
Okay. Beaufort County Resolution to Defend the Second Amendment Rights. And Commissioner Burge, you believe that you asked for this to be put on there?
I did. Uh, I think as a commission board, we should stand up for the Second Amendment rights of the, uh, people in this nation. And what we got going on in Washington DC right now is a group of people who want to take away our gun rights. And it was sad that those children and teachers were killed in that school up there. But the guns didn't do it. It was the man pulling the trigger. And also, unless I'm mistaken, uh, they keep hollering that he used an assault rifle. And my understanding is that assault rifle was still in the trunk of that car. Now, and I've been told that now. Well, that's true or not, I don't know, but I wouldn't doubt what it's not because you can't get the federal government to tell you the truth about nothing. I wouldn't trust anybody up there on anything. And I think we ought to take a stand and do something similar to what, uh, the other counties are doing and stand up for our rights. Because, you know, I, I don't want to give the federal government, state government, county government or the city government any more of our rights. I think they've already taken too many of them the way it is. So we got to stand up somewhere and if we don't start now, I don't know, you know, if they get our guns, we're done. They already got our healthcare. So they get our guns, we're, we're, we're just done.
Mr. Morris or Mr. Meesmer? Any thoughts about this?
I, I think certainly that, that it is an important issue. Um, yeah, I agree with, with some of what Mr. Burge said. You know, I, I don't think that, that gun control is the answer to these tragic situations that we've experienced. Wish that I had the, the quick answer to solve that problem and I do not. I, I'm not sure that, that gun control is it. The, you know, if they prevent, prevented folks from, from having guns, most of the people that I would be concerned about have other ways of getting them. And, and those are the ones I'd be concerned with. As far as this, uh, resolution, uh, and I'd like to maybe hear some feedback from the county attorney on the, the, uh, the portion of it that, that says be it further resolved, the county manager be directed to see that no county paid staff participate in nor allow any county resources to be used in the implementation of any federal law, executive order or executive directive that infringe on the right to keep and bear arms. Um, you know, not that I think that we would get to that point, but, um, for us to instruct, um, county employees to ignore, um, federal officials and federal law, it would be the way that I would read that. What, what would be your take on that, Rich?
Forgive me, I have laryngitis, but I'll try to summarize this best I can because there are actually a lot of issues contained in this one resolution. Let me just start by saying that, that the parts of the North Carolina and US Constitution aren't correctly cited. The Heller case that's referred to, that is a Supreme Court case, that is, that law is about five years old. And that, and basically just involved a situation up in, in DC involving, um, the right to have a handgun for protection in the home. The District of Columbia had a, a blanket ban on handguns at that time. The court struck that down, but in, in doing so, um, it said that the, the Second Amendment right is not absolute and does not extend to all persons, all places and all situations and that it can be regulated. So Supreme Court has spoken on that and that is still currently the law as it relates to that specific issue. So it's a, it's a partial right. It's not an absolute right the way that the Supreme Court is, is construing the Second Amendment. The McDonald case was a matter, um, a case from Chicago, again, another Supreme Court case that was from 2010. And it related to, um, again, handguns. And said it was a basic right and a self, a central component of the Second Amendment. But it still said that, uh, the court still said that it is not absolute and it is, um, it can, there can be some regulation or some limitations on it. Now, the, the potential problem with, with the first, um, resolution, paragraph at the bottom of the page and the sec-
Your own page, on the first page?
On the first page, yes, sir.
Page fifteen?
And on the second page for that matter. The first one at the top of the page is that Supreme Court cases and the Constitution of the United States are the supreme law of the land. And there is a constitutional provision called the supremacy clause that says that federal law trumps state law. So for the General Assembly to, um, attempt to pass a law in North Carolina, whether it be just a bill from the, uh, General Assembly or for that matter, a change in the Constitution, would be limited by that supremacy clause provision. So not, you know, so looking at it, those two would appear to be troublesome legally on their face. Now, you go on and talk about some different issues in the second paragraph of-
Which page?
Page two, sorry. In that provision, talking about, um, amending the US Constitution. And there are several or a couple of ways to do that. They're both contained in Article Seven of the Constitution. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that because one of the ways, no one's ever done it that way. Uh, that the way that's typically done is, um, is for Congress to, by both, um, um, houses to pass a, um, a resolution, um, by a two-thirds majority and then submit it to, for the constitutional amendment and then submit it to the states. And then you need three-quarters of the state legislators or three-quarters of the state legislatures, um, to pass it as well. That's why if you remember your history, there've been a number of amendments to the Constitution that have taken years to, to finally be enacted because it got through Congress and then it, it took a while to get all the requisite states to, to enact it. So that's the way it's typically done. The other way, it actually starts at the state legislature level where the, the General Assembly would vote along with, uh, two-thirds of the other states to ask Congress to set up a, a constitutional convention. Then to actually, um, actually it's constitutional conventions in each of the states to consider this. Now what is, the reason that's never been done is because Congress then doesn't want to lose control of the discussion on any amendment to the US Constitution. So it's, it's never gotten that far. So, but those are the two ways that that's done. So, so that is possible and that could apply to, you know, certainly the provisions in, in A and B. But you would have to have a, basically a change of the law in order to get that done. You know, the concept of nullification is kind of a, it's kind of a tricky business. Basically, you're asking the people, um, more often than not, you hear it in terms of jury verdicts where the jury just ignores the law and says, "This is the result we want." And then they, uh, they decide accordingly, regardless of what they've been instructed. It would put the staff here in a very difficult position to, um, at this level, instruct, you know, the county employees to act in a way that, that might, you know, very arguably be a violation of, of the Constitution. So it would seem that you would want to have that decided, uh, before you started out, maybe with that kind of a provision. And then the last paragraph there, the third paragraph on page two, is talking about concealed weapons. And you all have some ordinances concerning concealed weapons and we've had to change the ordinances because of some changes from the General Assembly recently about, that related specifically to parks. You may remember that. They, uh, limited some of the prohibitions about concealed carry in parks. The potential problem with, with saying that under the law, that everyone would have the same right to concealed carry as a sworn law enforcement officer, is it would eviscerate all the, the restrictions on felons having handguns or concealed carry and certain other people that may or may not, um, really need to have them. It says the right of a law-abiding citizen. I'm not sure exactly what they mean there. What I can tell you is that you can have an incompetent person that's a law-abiding citizen, someone who's incompetent under the law. I'm not sure you would want someone like that necessarily having, you know, concealed carry. That's just, you know, an observation. That's not an opinion. But there are a number of issues that come up with this and, and certainly if there's some, you know, support for, you know, change in the US Constitution and North Carolina Constitution consistent with it, that certainly can be done and it can relate to, uh, to any or all of these provisions. Is that, is that too much?
That was plenty.
Sorry. I say there's, there's more than just one issue to it.
Right. I understand. So, so the, the, the rules and regulations and laws that we currently use here in Cabarrus County, if, if an individual wants to apply for a concealed carry permit, those originate from the state or federal?
A lot of it.
Or both?
Pretty much concealed carry is state law.
Right.
But the overall, you know, limitations on, on handguns and, uh, and on different types of guns, that's federal law.
Right. Right.
So, you've got a number of different provisions, statutory provisions concerning concealed carry in North Carolina relating to different locations and the eligibility of certain people.
Right.
To either be able to conceal carry or not. And certainly, the procedure for being able to obtain a concealed carry permit is state law, but it's actually administered through each local sheriff.
Right.
Commissioner Burridge?
So, in essence, we would be instructing the Sheriff's Department to ignore all of the federal laws based on this statement?
Yeah, I think that one is problematic, yes.
In essence, Beaufort County's in violation of their own resolution.
Right.
I'm not saying we adopt their resolution. All I'm trying to say is we ought to at least stand up for the Second Amendment, for the people's right to bear arms and protect theirsself, instead of allowing the federal government, and what's going to eventually happen, and I know it, y'all know it, they're going to come and take your guns. And that's exactly what this is for. That's their intent. Every time something comes up that they can start working on gun control, that's the first thing they start on, and their next plan is to take the guns away from the American people. And they're not going to get it done. But we ought to at least stand up for the Second Amendment, and as far as I'm concerned, people have a right to carry a gun, just like the Vice President said, you know, "Take your shotgun out on the porch and shoot up there twice." Well, how stupid is that if somebody's coming at you with a pistol? That's not going to scare them off. They're going to shoot you. And I just think people have a right to protect theirself, and when they get all your guns, you won't have that right.
What would you think, what would, language would you recommend instead of what Beaufort or?
Well, I mean, we can surely come up with something, just say that we do stand for the Second Amendment, and we believe in people's rights to bear arms. We believe in people's right to own guns. And I don't care if it's AK-47 or whatever it is, if it's an automatic weapon or whatever, I don't care how many, what size magazine they can own, that's their right to own it if they want to own it, as far as I'm concerned. Now, if anybody want one, I don't know. But, just you talking about concealed carry, you got to go over and get you a permit, you got to pay $75 every, what is it, three years?
Five.
Five years to keep a concealed carry. As far as I'm concerned, the Second Amendment gives you that right anyway, without going over and doing all that. But it just seems to me like that we're giving away more and more to the federal government, which is totally, Washington DC is a nation within a nation. They don't care about nobody out here outside of Washington DC. And, you know, if we don't wake up, then we're going to be slaves to them, is all I got to say.
May I make two other observations?
Sure.
About the law. First is Commissioner Burridge is right, and it brought to mind the fact that there is pending the assault weapons ban of 2013 in Congress. And I think that's what you're referring to. And it's a pretty complicated law, and it seems, what it seems to grant at the beginning, in the end, a lot of it, it takes away. So, I, you know, without getting into some specifics, the grandfather provision sounds pretty broad, for example, that anybody who's got one now can keep it. Well, not so fast. There's a number of exceptions to that. So, I just wanted to mention that. So, I think that he's correct about that. The other thing is, just as far as Heller and McDonald, the decisions are concerned, one of them was 168 pages, and the other was 135 of opinion, in the printed opinion. So, it gives you an idea of how much discussion goes into a decision of the Supreme Court on something like this, and maybe some convulsion.
Well, Commissioner Burridge, I don't think that the four of us, and I haven't heard Commissioner Poole weigh in it, but I can't imagine it being far from different, is that we would all support the Second Amendment. And I think that if you can, if you can come up with some language. I'm concerned about the Beaufort language because the very thing that they ask the county manager to do, they're in violation of. He said that, you know, that, and there's some issues with the documentation, document that they have. I certainly would like to have Sheriff Riley's input on how this is going to affect whatever thing we do, if we're specific in regards to telling county staff what they can and cannot do in their role as an employee with the county. But in regards to supporting the Second Amendment, I don't think.
That's all I'm asking, is that we just, we just, and I think the county attorney should put it together because, you know, he knows the laws and everything. Just some kind of a statement that we make, that we support the Second Amendment. We're in disagreement with Washington DC trying to take away our gun rights, trying to put taxes on ammunition. The Homeland Security has bought millions of rounds of ammunition the last, over the last year. Now, what are they going to do with it? What's Homeland Security going to do with ammunition? Millions of rounds of ammunition. Guess who they're going to use it on? They're going to use it on us before it's over, if we let them get by with this stuff. So, I just think we'll have some kind of resolution saying we stand up for it and have the, let the county, let the people in the county know that we do stand for gun rights.
Well, I serve at the pleasure of the Board, so whatever you'd like me to draft, I'll be happy to do so.
And I don't want to tie the hands of the county employees or cause them to do anything against the law, which most of what the federal government does is you should be against anyway.
Right. Well, the first thing you said was very important, and I think that whenever a bad event takes place, there's a knee-jerk reaction to shift the opposite, the opposite direction without discussing the issue at hand. And when you talk about Sandy Hook, when you're talking about Columbine, when you're talking about whatever, Colorado movie theater, you know, when you talk about each one of those issues, the biggest thing, what it boils down to is the very thing that nobody is talking about. And that's mental history, mental illness. You're talking about substance abuse, whether it's alcohol or drugs. You're talking about issues that those have a lot to do with it, and they're acting out on, through a violent, very violent nature, that nobody condones nor believes should happen. But the problem is, when people want to grab headlines, they do a knee-jerk reaction and go to the opposite direction. And I don't think they understand what their actions are. They may very well understand their actions, but they don't address the issue. So, that I think if we're going to pass a resolution, if we're going to discuss any resolution, it needs to talk about that those issues that are really at point need to be discussed and need to be addressed. You know, and that's, that will be done, but I do think that it's important to hear what Sheriff Riley's got to say, because he's ordered to issue permits or look into permits. And if we get specific, and I know that you said not to do that, but I think it's important for us to understand, if we ask staff, I consider Sheriff's Department staff. We don't want to get them in a bind when that's really not the topic. The topic is supporting the Second Amendment, and also have a frank discussion about what is causing this, and it's not just purchasing any type of gun.
Well, it's not a lack of gun laws that we have.
Well, they don't enforce the ones they got.
Right. Chicago has the most gun laws of any place in the country. New York City does. They have more murders than any other place. They don't, I heard them say the other day that, I think it was seventy-some percent of the people that they pick up on gun violations, they turn them loose. So, the court system's not working. And the people who are out there doing crime, they not going to get permits to start with. They don't have permits for them guns. They buying them illegally, and gun laws is not going to stop that. I don't care what you do. Gun laws won't stop it. What I'm talking about is allowing honest, law-abiding citizens to be able to protect theirselves. And I think we have that right to do that, and I don't think Washington DC has the right to take it away from us, which is exactly what they're trying to do now. And y'all can believe it or not believe it, but y'all might trust them people in Washington DC, but I don't trust anybody up there.
Commissioner Mason, do you have anything to add or?
I mean, I certainly would be willing to defend the Second Amendment right, and I don't believe gun control is the answer. So, I think it's all been said.
Anything else?
I don't think. The conversation is going to end quickly. You know, I certainly would be in favor of making a statement that we felt like might have some impact on expressing our opinion or our support of Second Amendment rights. But I would prefer that it be something that not include items such as those we've discussed that negate the validity of what we're trying to say. So, you know, if it were the pleasure of the Board to, if one of us wanted to present an alternative resolution, or ask for advice or guidance from staff, from legal staff, I would be happy to consider it.
Same, I would do that as well. Do we want Mr. Cook to do this, or do we want to take a stab at it ourselves and then send it to Mr. Cook and let him look at it?
Well, if he, if we do it, time it gets to him, he's going to change most of it anyway, so.
I wouldn't say that. I wouldn't agree with that.
Well, if you'll just give me the concepts you want in it, I'll put it in the language that I think you'll find acceptable.
I think what you ought to do is you ought to put in there that we support the Second Amendment, that we would encourage the federal government to enforce the gun laws they've already passed. I think that they also, that if they're going to have any discussion, before they have any discussion on the Second Amendment, they need to address the real issue, which is substance abuse or addiction, mental illness, recidivism. Those are some things that I would think needs to be in there.
Yeah, I think the main thing is your mental illness.
Well.
And what we keep, we keep cutting back on treating people with mental illnesses in this country.
Now.
We keep putting them on some kind of a drug that either drives them to go kill somebody or kill theirselves. And, you know, that's one big problem we've got in this country, is people on, not just illegal drugs, but prescription drugs.
I think those are debates and discussions that need to be made. Unfortunately, it's not our.
No, we can't do anything about it, but.
Well, if we're going to do a resolution, it needs to have some impact, and it needs to have some merit to it, not just to put some fluff out there to get some exposure.
And, you know, alcohol, if it's a disease, why don't we bottle it and sell it?
Well, you can say that about a lot of things, Commissioner Burridge. But, you know, anyway, so, well, I think that that would be a start.
May I ask one question concerning the existing interpretation or construction of the Second Amendment by the Supreme Court? Do you want your resolution to include some sort of a provision that wants it rolled back, perhaps to a more literal interpretation of the Second Amendment? I thought, I understood that might be part of what you wanted, Commissioner Burridge. Is that part of what you would want?
I would like to see it.
I think that can be addressed in a sentence of saying, "We support the Second Amendment." Point blank. I mean, I, and that, you know, I think that that's the most important thing, is that that's something that we firmly believe in.
Well, part of this resolution from Beaufort County.
I wouldn't even.
Went down that direction.
I wouldn't go down that direction. I think it's, I think that, I believe, and this is my belief, is that they got kind of caught up in what they were wanting to do, and started throwing things in there and not understanding what their actions were, and referencing just that paragraph that, "No county paid staff to participate and allow any county resources to be used in the implementation of any federal law, executive order, or directive that infringe on the right to keep and bear arms." Well, if you have to get a permit, when you go to the Sheriff's Department, that is county staff money that infringes on your right to keep and bear arms. I think when you go down that path, we're going down a path of not having any substance. And also, I don't think that this resolution was unanimous by this board. Yeah. So, I mean, so I don't even think it was unanimous by their board. What that means, I don't even, we don't need to get into. I think it needs to be short and simple. That's what we're going to pass our resolution. I think it's clear, we support the Second Amendment.
I agree with that. We don't have to, you know, go through all this stuff, long as we, long as we just let the public know that we do stand for the Second Amendment. We don't want it changed. We don't want the federal government taking them where it right to bear arms.
I would ask that if you draft something up, you get something, when you get something drafted up, if you'll send it out so we can look at it, because, just to make certain we're all on, in agreement to it.
You had mentioned wanting to involve the sheriff in this earlier on, or get his input. Do you want to do that before the resolution's drafted, or just send him one to comment on as well?
I would just send him one to, for him to comment on it, to make certain that it doesn't put him, I don't see how, if we're, if we're, if we're, if the language is right in regards to more broad statements, not saying what he can and cannot do, will or will not do, I don't think he'll have an issue with that, but I do want him to understand what this, the five of us will be discussing and most likely passing.
I think, I think the impact of this is going to be more for our citizens, to express our position to them. It will be placed on our agenda. It will be publicized. If there are folks in the community that disagree with our position, they will have an opportunity to come and talk. Those that support our position will have an opportunity to express that support. I have great doubt of the federal impact of our statements, but at least our local folks will know that, where we stand on it.
Yeah. And my point in regards to local is that there's no reason for us to do something knowing it's not going to get implemented locally. And this resolution that I see for Beaufort, I have a serious doubt that they're following it even today.
Right.
That's my, that was my point. So, yeah. Okay?
Question, I guess, for Mr. Cook. Is it reasonable to think that that would be ready for the regular meeting this month, or would April, is there an urgency, Mr. Burridge, or Mr. Chair, to have it done this month, or is April okay? I don't know if you've got.
April's okay with me.
Okay.
Let's take your time.
Yeah, let's get it done right.
Okay.
Thank you. We don't need to meet on a Friday. Well, is this a Friday? Yep, Friday, just pass it.
Right. So, I just want to make sure you, just want to make sure you understand, it's not going to show up on your regular meeting, it'll show up in either the work session or the regular meeting of April. Okay?
Yeah.
I'll have it for the work session.
Thank you. Next we have is 4.2, the request to purchase right of way. Mr. Marshall?
In August of 2012, we brought this before you the first time. It was for the George Law's Parkway extension between Weddington Road and Highway 29. It affects the backside of the Winkler Middle School property. And it does not affect the school or any of the facilities related to the school. The school board supported this, as well as the Board of Commissioners. As they've gone forward and done the design, they've determined they need, instead of just .6 acres, they need .8 acres. So, the purchase price has gone from eighteen, just under $19,000 to $24,300. So, we need to bring this back to you to approve the sale of that right of way, as well as the budget amendment that goes along with it. Mr. Cook had brought up, when we did this initially, because of the type of financing done on that school, we did take this by our bond council. There was some language that they wanted to include that, I guess, the bond council felt needed to be included. NCDOT did that, and it was assured us they will do that in the documents that did come forward.
And the provisions of the deed of trust that the financing on that property is secured by require that there be a resolution.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions?
Excuse me, from the board.
Any questions for Mr. Marshall or Mr. Cook? Okay. Thank you very much. 4.3, one-time funding senior center expansion. Mr. Marshall, Ms. Billiford.
This is an item that we've been discussing, is one of, of course, the one-time funding projects for some, for expansion of the senior center. We looked really at three options, and remodeling, and the third option, the one that I believe we had the most support from the board, was to actually expand the center slightly, coming out on the, as you're facing the building, the front right, bringing that wall out to expand one room, allow expansion of an exercise room, remodeling of what are currently used for storage in offices to be another classroom space. We had, we'd gotten the initial design work done, an estimate for that. And this is before you, for the budget amendment, to move it forward, for completing that design work and completing the project itself. If you have questions about the timeline of that, or specifics about the project, Mr. Billiford can answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Billiford or Mr. Marshall? Now, this is actually taking, I thought we were talking about not taking a wall down and moving it out, just remodeling the inside. Is that what our, I thought that was what our first discussions were about.
First discussion was, we thought it would be too expensive to actually move that wall, but when we started looking at the budgets and estimated costs, we found that we could, and it was within, I think, a price that was acceptable to this board.
Yeah. The other discussion on moving a wall was actually in the kitchen area, and we do not recommend that. In fact, that does not even, that's not involved in this project.
That's right.
Okay. Has this been provided to the board?
Yeah.
This, this one, because of the moving the wall out?
That's correct. As far as I'm aware, the plan hasn't changed from the first time I went to the senior center advisory board. And out of the three plans, this was the preferred plan by the advisory board.
Commissioner Morris, were you gonna say something? I'm sorry.
No.
Okay.
How many people on the advisory board?
I don't, I'm not sure, probably ten or so, or more?
I'd say upwards 15, 20.
This says estimated cost. How close to an estimate is that?
There'd be no way to know until we bid it out.
So, it might be $500,000.
I had them estimate in the conservative side, so to add some fat to it.
And that contract would come back to you for approval? Anything else? Okay. How about 4.4, EMS approval of the ambulance piggyback purchase and related budget amendment? I will call on the new director, Alan Thompson.
I have to, I have to.
Come on up, Ms. Lentz.
I was gonna say, I was gonna ask, when you sit down at the microphone, I'm gonna get you to introduce Mr. Lentz.
You'll have to lift it up, because it was for the prior director.
And then we have with us Jimmy Lentz, who is the new assistant director.
Congratulations.
Quite a difference in height. We're here tonight to request replacement of three ambulances that have exceeded the county mileage replacement policy, EMS units. The three ambulances that we request replacement for have greater than 125,000 miles on each of these. We're requesting that that be addressed currently as part of this year, because we're looking at replacing six ambulances over the next 12 months. And with a 220-day average build-out time, which is the industry standard for ambulance replacements, we do not want to get any farther in the hole on the mileage with these ambulances.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson or Mr. Lentz?
I did wanna point, before Mr. Lentz, I did want him to discuss with you some of the issues that related to this particular group of ambulances we need to replace, but we came to you last year with a replacement of three ambulances, those were ordered, but because it was such a long lead time, you made a, the board made a budget amendment last year so we could do that, but we didn't actually buy them until this budget year. We're really in the same, we're in the same position this year. You'll, we're asking you to make a budget amendment so we can put out the purchase order and get these started. We probably will not be able to, they won't be delivered, and we won't actually pay for them until July or August. But because of that lead time and our own financial controls, we need to come before you this year. We have included in, or will include in the proposed budget for you next year, an additional replacement of three ambulances, and we've shown that in the CIP going forward, because as we look at the mileage, we've determined we're gonna be on about that replacement schedule, three ambulances each year. And again, Mr. Lentz can talk about the specifics of these vehicles.
Thank you for this opportunity. Over the last three or four years, we've seen changes in the industry. We were strictly with Ford for years and years and years. And in the '06, '07, and '08 range, they switched from what I will call a tried and true 7.3 diesel engine to a 6.0, which industry-wide has been just a nightmare. One of these three units that we have up for replacement there will alleviate us from that concern, which has been a tremendous burden on our budget. Granted, Ford has worked with us and the industry as good as they can, but we're glad to see that unit go, just to be blunt. The second problem is during that same timeframe, we found it feasible, with at that time, Mr. Hampton, we found it feasible to go the route of a remount, which if you're not familiar with about a, with a remount, we take the box, the modular unit off an ambulance, and the existing chassis, which would have the comparable mileage we're talking about now, and put it on a new chassis. It is somewhat cheaper on the initial purchase price, but as we found out with these units, it just really doesn't work out in the long run. And we would, as Kyle could attest to, we can get a lot of support from the general services facility and the fleet maintenance facility on that, because these trucks, when you go in and separate all the wiring, the big problem we see is electrical. It's just really hard to get all that back. So, we would be getting rid of another, of another one of those units that has previously been remounted. And then the oldest unit we had is one we've held on to, that is a 7.3. We held on to it because the mileage on it was lower. It was at one of our stations that aren't quite as busy, and we've held on to it for a few years and got rid of newer units that were 6.0s, just because it was a tried and true truck. We're to a point now with it, age-wise, it's not feasible to keep it any longer either.
Any questions for Mr. Lentz or Mr. Thompson?
How many ambulances do we have total in Cabarrus County?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
We currently, as you know, staff 10 emergent trucks daily, with one non-emergent truck, and then we have four spare, our reserve units.
And we're requesting this as a piggyback purchase, which means that the legwork has already been done by another county. We'll find a county that has already got the specifications, which does save significant expense.
How much difference are the specifications that we need as opposed to Elmore County?
What we will do is find a, excuse me, a county that has specified ambulances that are very similar to what we currently use with the same type of boxes and same type chassis.
Okay. How many miles on average do we put on an ambulance?
Around 28,000 miles a year. Another standard that we're starting to look at is General Motors and Ford both have issued some guidance on hour utilization, to where they are, for example, with the hour meters on the ambulances, giving some consideration for that being mileage wear and tear as well, because with ambulances, they idle a great deal of time, because with the electrical systems and the devices that we're supporting with these ambulances, when they get on the scene, we can't shut them off. If we shut them off, then they're gonna be dead on the spot. So, what we're doing is starting to maintain a greater awareness of how many hours these units are running as well. When we look at replacing an ambulance, obviously there's a cost with it, there's a challenge to budget for those, but we compare that to the potential implication of having a critical unit failure while we're responding to a call.
Is there a device on the new units that will gauge idle time?
That is correct. The three units that we're attempting to replace right now do not have hour meters. We have one additional unit in the fleet that does not have an hour meter, but the remaining part of our fleet does have hour meters.
Are they hard to put on?
They, I would have to ask Jimmy.
In 2008, 2009, in that timeframe, they've become a standard option.
Okay.
So, there, there, there. And truthfully, looking at that standard, it jacks our mileage. The standard is per hour, 33 miles. So, we're looking, that changes our, I mean, it jacks our mileage way up.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I just thank you for pointing that out, because I really hadn't analyzed that, and I think that's good for the public to know that the amount of time that they are idling does make a difference.
It does.
When you just say 125,000 miles, flat up, you think, well, that's not so very high. But if you add that to it, you know, if my vehicle breaks down, I'm gonna be upset and inconvenienced, but if your vehicle breaks down, it's a little bit more serious than that. So, thank you for pointing out those details.
Thank you. And I would add that the three that we're replacing, one is at 149,000, 145,000, and then 125,000, that's where we are.
Miles, we don't know hours.
No hour consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you all.
Thank you for your time.
Next is refunding general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount up to $95 million. I will call on Ms. Wilson and possibly Mrs. Dubois.
Yes, what we need to do is declare, we've already declared that we'll have a public hearing. We need to actually conduct that public hearing at the meeting.
So, we just need to call for a public hearing for the April, or March 18th?
Yeah, the March 18th is the public hearing, and it has been properly advertised.
Okay.
And then there's a resolution that after you have the public hearing, you'll need to.
And if we approve the resolution, it doesn't mean it gets done unless we get the right interest rate and everything else is what we've requested in the past.
Correct.
And it's just refunding, or it's refinancing the debt that we already have?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
And the tentative sale dates April 25th.
Okay. Thank you. Next is request for, to fund an unfunded position and related budget amendment. Mrs. Sifford.
Good afternoon. As you all are aware and have seen with the building reports we've been providing you, we've had an increasing number of inspections, and you were also provided with some lovely charts and information Parth did for us, our new budget officer, showing our needs. DOI, who I guess monitors and controls the certificates for our inspectors, roughly they recommend tendon 12 inspections a day per inspector to be doing it right. And of course, there's some variation there, depending on the type of inspection that they're doing, but that's roughly what their expectations are. We are greatly exceeding that in some areas. So, this is a request to begin to get us back into line with the appropriate number of inspections as recommended by DOI.
This is, this position is an approved position in your budget last year, we just did not fund it? So, therefore, as Ms. Sifford has said, inspections are up, revenues are up, because we're issuing more permits, and therefore, what we're asking is a, you're not, you're not having to approve the budget, or the position, you're approving a budget amendment to pull in those additional revenues and assign it to this, this position, and fund this position with that, with those additional revenues that we have received.
Any other, any questions? Thank you. Next we have is health insurance plan renewal 2013-14 with Mrs. Ray, Mrs. Covington, and Mr. Browder.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Browder, I'm with Mark III, and I've had the honor to work with you all for about 20 years on your employee benefits. What I'm going to do is review the PowerPoint presentation that was handed out to you in your prior material, talk about sort of where the plan has been, where it's going, and what the recommendations are for the 13-14 plan year. If you go to slide number two, you'll see these are the plan design, plan designs that we went to in 2013-14. The middle column, where it says OAP, was a change from the HMO plan to a more traditional PPO plan, increasing the deductible, changing co-pays pretty much across the board. The plan on the right-hand side, the Health Savings Account Plan, was also a new plan for the 12-13 year, where it's more traditional deductible co-insurance. The county also funds a Health Savings Account for all employees who decide to go into this plan. Slide number three, these are the rates as they stand for the 2012-2013 plan year. One of the things that I want to point out to you is the participation in both plans. We did see a fairly strong amount of participation into the Health Savings Account, with about 30% of the population going into that plan. But I also want to point out that about 70% of your eligible participants decided to stay with a more traditional plan that provided co-pays. But all in all, I think it was a good representation for the HSA plan, but again, your employees are generally more comfortable with a traditional co-pay plan design. Slide number four, there's obviously a lot of numbers on here, and this is the kind of information that I review with staff relative to how the plan is performing. Because of the plan design changes that we made, the plan through December was trending down about 11%, which was a significant improvement over the prior year. We're actually running about $750,000 better at this time than we were last year. However, the plan still needs some adjustment to stay within budget going into 13-14, and that's what we're gonna talk about in the next few slides. Slide number five, there's a couple of things on this. First of all, highlighted in yellow, even though we made plan design changes, we're still looking at about a 17.5% increase for 13-14. Part of the change, or the increase in funding, is coming from healthcare reform. You'll see in the bottom third, you'll see some rows in pink that say PPACA. One of them is a research fee that's going to have to be paid in 13. The second row, it says women's health benefits, is a benefit enhancement that will be coming as part of the plan year 13-14. And then finally, there's a reinsurance fee that at the beginning of 14, that the county is going to have to send to support healthcare reform. So, part of the increase that we're seeing is reflected in the rows.
Can you explain what PPACA?
It's healthcare reform, patient, it's healthcare reform.
Obamacare?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then in the bottom, just as a reminder, you're a self-funded health plan. You'll see a health, health insurance industry fee of about $229,000. That is a fee that the county is avoiding by being self-funded. And also, the state of North Carolina has always had a premium tax of about $183,000, which you're avoiding. So, altogether, by being self-funded, the plan's avoiding about a little over $400,000 of cost. One of the main slides for discussion is slide number six, and this is plan design options for 13-14. We're, we're aware that, that a 17.5% increase is difficult to stand with the budget, so what we are providing the county are a couple of options. Option one is a change to a couple of different benefits. One is, there's no change to the deductibles, but there is a change for specialist office visit from a co-pay of $60 to the actual cost of the service up to where the deductible is satisfied. So, it'll say deductible and co-insurance. It means now that that specialist service applies to the deductible instead of being a co-pay. This also applies to outpatient surgery, or urgent care as well, and we're also transitioning the co-pay for ER, emergency room, from $150 to deductible and co-insurance. The last change that we're recommending is that there isn't going to be a change in the pharmacy co-pays themselves, but in advance of the co-pay being paid, the member would pay the actual cost of the medication for brand names up to $150. So, if it's a, if it's a medication that costs $200, they're gonna pay the first $150, and then the co-pay will apply. There isn't any change recommended in the Health Savings Account Plan. The plan is running well. Most of this is directed at the current OAP plan. This brings the renewal down from a 17.5% to a 5% increase, or approximately $345,000. The second option that we, that we showed the staff was a Health Savings Account Plan only, so it would eliminate the OAP plan and the co-pay plans, and that would essentially bring the renewal down to a zero. The challenge is. The challenge is how employees would respond to this. Typically, when you offer a Health Savings Account Plan, it's four, five, six years before you end up, if you do it all, go to a total replacement HSA. Many employees are depending on co-pays, especially on the pharmacy side, for the purposes of budget. So we've got about 22 or 3 Health Savings Account clients in place. Of those, only two are total HSA plans. Now, and just to give you a little background, we work primarily with the public sector. We've got about 30 counties that we work with and about 10 or 15 cities that we work with. So we have a very large book of business within the public sector and understand what your employees are looking for. So the recommendation for 2013-14 from us is option two. We think it fits with the budget. We think that it'll still allows employees.
Option one.
I'm sorry, option one, excuse me. Thank you. Option one. It allows us to fall within what is budgeted. It also gives your employees the chance or the opportunity to maintain co-pays if that's what they're interested in. The changes that we are making within the OAP plan will bring more consumerism as your members get to see what the cost of the services are, especially for specialist services. And it remains, it keeps the HSA plan unchanged. And I've talked relatively quickly, so I'll slow down here and let you ask any questions that you might have on this part of the presentation.
Any questions for Mr. Browder? Got a couple for you, as usual. In regards to the prescription drugs, because that's really a big one, that people are, I don't know if they understand what that actually means, going up to $150 co-pay, excuse me, that's, they understand it. The reality of it is what it means to them in their pocketbook on a monthly basis. The average, do we know what an average pharmacy cost is now for the staff?
Yeah, it depends on.
Whether they, if they have the OAP plan?
Yeah, it depends on which medication that they're choosing. The average generic is going to be around $22 to $23. The average specialist medication is going to be running in the $75 to $80 range. This front-end deductible is a one-time.
One-time $150?
One-time only.
Oh, okay.
So once they've satisfied the deductible, then from there out through the rest of the year, it is only, they pay the normal co-pays. And that front-end deductible does not apply to generics.
Okay. Any other questions? Any discussion? We have, I've been involved in an HSA for about four years now, and it shocks the pharmacy when I go in and buy our medicines.
Right.
Because they're scared to send it out to me knowing how much it's, how much we have to pay. But in the long run, it's the better thing for me. But I would encourage, if we're going to go, keep option one, that we just keep on educating everybody what OAP is and what the HSA is. Because we've, we had some concerns addressed to us, I think about the middle of last year by at least a couple of employees. And I just want to make certain that as best they can, they have an understanding about what their election is. When is the election period if they're going to choose the OAP or the HSA?
It's going to be this spring, April, May.
15, April 15th to May 17th.
Do we have, is that going to be enough time to educate so that?
That's why we're coming to you now. Instead of doing this through the budget process, we want to make sure, we want to get your approval on option one, hopefully, so that we can start that process so that we're ready to go on that open enrollment. So that'll give us 30 days to sort of educate and then, almost 45 days maybe, to educate and then be ready to sign up. So Mark and I think Lundie and Joanna may be talking as well, not just this, but we're also, we're still trying to mine the store and make sure that consumerism is still on everybody's mind. So we've got some other things that we're going to be putting in place to continue to encourage our employees to be mindful of what, where they're going for services, both from their personal finances as well as the county's finances, and then also encouraging them to remain as healthy as possible individually as well. So because it affects us in an aggregate form as well on our bills. So I think you guys are going to talk about that a little bit as well.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right. The second half of the discussion is really about how we can improve the health of the employee population. So we've talked about consumerism, but what our clients are starting to do is move more towards employee accountability, goal-setting, and giving employees leadership on how to make progress that's going to be not only in their best interest, but ultimately in everyone's best interest with respect to funding the health plan. Slide number eight, I'm not going to dwell on this very long, other than to say, over the last 20 years, and I think we all know this, there has been substantial changes in the health of the U.S. population, and obesity has increased dramatically. Slide number nine, this is a slide that talks about how or what is the determination of healthcare utilization. And certainly, Gen X plays a part, environment plays a part, but at least 50%, and in many studies, we see 75% of healthcare demand is driven by behavior. So slide number 10 sort of outlines the beginning of what we are looking to do. Today, employees already complete a health risk assessment, but in the spring of 2013, we're going to put this discounted rate structure that exists today for tobacco into some other categories as well. So we're going to conduct biometric screenings, which will be measuring waist circumference, cholesterol, glucose, and high blood pressure to create a baseline for the employees. We'll continue to use tobacco use as also a factor in the rates that we have going forward. So slide number 11, this outlines, it mirrors very closely to what you have today, whereas employees that don't participate, that are tobacco users, pay a higher rate. The non-tobacco users pay a discounted rate. What we're adding into this for 2013-14 are those, if you participate in the biometric screenings, you get a discounted rate. If you don't, then you're going to pay this higher rate structure. So this allows employees to make sure they understand exactly where they stand on their health. And coming out of this screening, they'll have a set of goals to be working towards to maintain the discounted rate that we're putting in for this current year, 2013-14. So the way that an employee will qualify for the discounted rate structure in 2013-14 is a couple of different ways. They meet three out of the four control standards, that is, they meet the standards themselves, or they've improved to the standard. So starting at the top, waist circumference, for males, if you're less than 40 as a male or less than 35 as a female, you meet one of the control categories. If you are outside of that range or above that range, if you've improved from this spring to next spring, then by 5%, then you've qualified for that control stra, that control category. Blood pressure, if you're less than 140 over 90, you qualify or you've improved year over year by 10 over 5. Cholesterol ratio, there's about three different ways you can look at cholesterol. It can be total cholesterol. You can look at bad cholesterol or LDL. Or what cholesterol ratio is, is taking the total cholesterol divided by the good cholesterol. And the reason why this is a better measurement is because it takes exercise into consideration because good cholesterol or HCl is positively impacted by exercise. So either you meet that ratio or you've improved to that ratio. You meet that control standard. And then the final one is hemoglobin A1C is a measurement for diabetes. You'll see usually two, either glucose or HbA1C. This is a more accurate picture of a three-month snapshot, whereas glucose is a one specific point in time. So either you're less than the 7.0, if you're less than that, you qualify. There isn't an alternate standard. One of the questions that we've gotten from other customers, and we've got other clients who've implemented this, like Iredale County, Cleveland County, Cumberland County, and there are more to come, is if I take medication to hit these control factors, is that okay? And the answer is absolutely. Because an uncontrolled hypertensive or an uncontrolled diabetic is significantly worse for them and for the amount of healthcare utilization that they have going into the future. So the taking blood pressure medication or insulin to control their healthcare condition is a positive in our eyes, not just meeting these standards without the assistance of the medical community. Any questions on this whatsoever?
Any questions? Okay.
And that is it for me.
Thank you very much.
Just to point out that we did do this presentation at the retreat, and Ms. Wilson did incorporate that into that five-year plan. The $345,000 was included into the increased cost for next year.
And Mark, if we had not made some adjustments on the OAP plan, what would that have, what impact financially would that have been on the budget versus the 340? It was over a million.
Yeah, it was. It is, actually, it's in the presentation. It'd have been a million, basically four.
Right. So we were able to reduce that increase by making some changes. So it's even more of a reason why we're going to need, we're going to be sitting down with our employees to make sure that they understand which plan is the best for them, but also to understand that there are going to be some changes, so.
Anything else? Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
That does it for our discussion items for today. We have, if we go back over, there are some proposed recommendations as it is in here, but if we wanted to put everything on new business, we can put it on new business so that the public can come in and talk about it if they'd like.
I might certainly do put on new business.
One-time funding for the senior center? We definitely will have 3.3 on the discussion in modified work session. That'll be on a new business. The resolution will be addressed in April. The NC DOT request to purchase the right-of-way, is that, what is the preference of the board on new business or consent?
Consent.
We have a motion to place this on consent. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. One-time funding, senior sentence and expansions, new business. EMS approval of ambulance piggyback purchase.
Consent.
Consent? Okay. We'll address all of them at one time then. Finance refunding of the, that has to be on new business since it's a hearing. The planning and development request for the unfunded position, you want that on consent or you want that on new business?
Clear.
Okay. And the wellness insurance plan renewal, that I would ask that that needs to be under new business so that at least the public will be able to see it and also staff or the employees will get another chance to look at it.
Right.
Okay? So that means that the wellness, the finance, the senior center, and the modified work session will be under new business, and the rest of it will be on consent. Is that what you got?
That's correct.
Got that?
Resolution.
The resolution is April.
The resolution will be April, yeah.
Yeah. Is everybody on the same page? We have a motion to approve the agenda as discussed. We have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I believe that does it for us, our business today. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here we go.